Okay, good evening and welcome to Heartland Township in the Planning Commission Meeting of November 20th. We would like to begin with a pledge. Please stand.
My pledge relates to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioner Hopkins, would you please take role?
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Commissioner Voight?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy is absent. Commissioner Mitchell is absent. Commissioner Grissom is absent. Commissioner Hopkins here. Commissioner Newsom?
Here.
Sheriff Professor Fox?
Here.
And we have Quorum of the Planning Commission. We also have present Township Planning Director Dave Kim.
All right, thank you. Next up is Item 4, Approval of Our Meeting Agenda.
I move to approve the Planning Commission Agenda for Thursday, November 20, 2014.
The second's that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Newsom, a second from Commissioner Voight. Any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carries. Next up, Item 5, Approval of Our Meeting Minutes.
I move to approve the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes from September 25, 2014. Second?
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hopkins, a second from Commissioner Voight. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Call to the public. No. All right, next up? Okay. Item 7, Public Hearing, we have none, so now we're up to Item 8.1, Presentation of DPW's Water Readiness to Serve Report. I think we'll start with Dave and...
Sure. So with us tonight is the Township's Director of the Public Works Department, Robert West, and Mr. West has developed a Township-wide water system readiness-to-serve analysis. And so included in your packets for this evening is the full report that he's developed and as long as the slides of the PowerPoint presentation I think Mr. West is going to go through with you this evening. I know he's very eager to make said presentation, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
All right. Well, good evening and thank you for having me here this evening. Just want to kind of preview. This was a study that was done basically to determine an assessment of the existing water system and what our future needs might be within the township. My first presentation maybe went a little long, maybe a little dry, so this is a somewhat of a more condensed version, so feel free. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have. So just going to start off here, give you a little background on our water system. As it stands right now, we're approximately just shy of 24 miles of distribution water main, ranging from 4-inch to 16. 4 is not allowed as a public water main any longer. 6-inch would be the smallest and usually that would only be for hydrant leads or something of that nature. A standard distribution main within a residential development would be 8-inch. That would be the minimum that would be required. With that, we have approximately 4.34 miles of service leads, which would be the main to the house, 246 fire hydrants, and approximately 616 service connections. That's commercial and residential. Our water system is basically fed from two well sites, but three wells total. Although you'll see the million gallons per day volume that the wells are capable of producing, we are only permitted through DEQ at the daily permitted volume, which sometimes they'll let you go to maximum capacity on smaller wells. When you get to the larger ones, it's the equivalent of you taking your car and running it at red line. It's not good for it, even though it can do it. So therefore, DEQ regulates what that pump, based on the pump curve, is capable of doing safely. Then they have also what's called a firm capacity. Firm capacity rating is what you're allowed to basically distribute in your system. It does not account for peak demands. It's a very safe yield, and what it factors in is taking the lowest component, the lowest producing component, out of service. So if we were to have service on this, our firm capacity would, is basically based on taking .065 million gallons per day offline. And that's not too bad when you have multiple wells, but when you look at our filter vessels, we have two filter vessels, which are basically the same size. And again, the firm capacity indicates you taking one of those offline, or the smallest one, but in this case they're the same size. So it's a bigger impact, and I would say the bigger hurdle or issue we may face in the future is somehow increasing the firm capacity of our filtration system. Right now, the water will exceed it. That's not to say, you can see based on the actual permitted numbers, we can certainly filter more than that. Our firm capacity rating is rated with one of those units out of service. When we talk about REUs and developments, basically, the township has sold 3127 water REUs to date. Right now, there's only 1678 in use. What we have is a lot of vacant properties that have purchased REUs, but they're not actually connected to the system yet. So that's where that comes from. The original SAD-1, as it's referred to, when the water system was first installed, actually accounted for 2629 water REUs.
Bob, what's an REU?
It's a residential equivalent unit, and it's just a statewide or national, actually, but our state, the state of Michigan, rates it as what does a single-family house use per day of water in sewer? And that's how you basically make equivalent measurements, if you will, between commercial and residential units. What a single REU does on a residential home is it allows 260 gallons of water going into the house, 210 coming out of the house in the form of sewage. And basically, that accounts for, you know, washing your floors or washing your car, something not going down the sewer, drinking water. We all know that everything that comes into the house, not everything comes back out, and that's how the state of Michigan classifies theirs. Other states have different ratings. That's just, it's 260 and 210 going out. So that's what an REU is, and when we try and make an equitable measurement with a commercial building, we may say your equivalent usage is to five REUs, or in layman's terms, five residential homes. You're using that much water. But we would base that on what they call an REU schedule. That is a long story short, we classify each particular building based on its usage and what its square footage. When you get into hotels and stuff like that, and restaurants, it actually factors in if you have a liquor license, or how many rooms, if you have a pool. There's many different variables that go into it. It's a somewhat of a small algorithm, if you will, to determine that. So I hope that kind of clears up REUs there.
I had a question.
Sure, absolutely.
The third number there says that you allocated 2,600 REUs, but you sold 31. Why is there a difference there?
That was the original SAD number one. Since then, we've had multiple additional SADS. This was just when the system first went in, in 2001. That was what, how the system was developed, was the fees collected basically off of selling 2,629 REUs. Since 2001, we've actually sold more, and we're now up to 3,127, even though they're not all in use.
I've got a further question than that.
Sure.
If you don't mind. What would be the MGD requirement of the 3127 versus what we're at right now?
MGD requirement is a very, how do I put this? It's an average, if you will. The bigger factor that we would take into consideration with this would what they call a peak demand. At 7:00 AM, if we took a measurement within an hour and averaged it out, it may come out to 1 million gallons a day. But at noon, it may be a different rating. Safely, the 3127, I would estimate it to be conservatively right around 1 million gallons per day. So we're well within...
So we're covered.
We get into the filtration limits here?
Kind of.
What's that?
I said we're almost covered, I guess.
Well, we are, because we're permitted for peak, we can go up to the ones that these are peak numbers we're allowed. This would be basically what you're allowed to do based on your average daily demand. So that's a better way to describe this. If we were to get to where all 3,127 REUs, they came to us and said, hey, we're ready to connect, basically, we would have to expand that filter vessel. The money collected through the sale of REUs would be basically used to fund those additional improvements.
So I had a question for you, Bob.
Yes.
Because I guess I was under misconception. I thought that firm capacity was established by taking out your largest well or your largest filter vessel.
I'm sorry. I asked you. You're absolutely right. I said it was the smallest, .65. I apologize. It was the .88, thinking out of that.
Okay.
So in Heartland Township, the biggest challenge we have with our water system is the range, if you will, of elevations. Our tower elevation, at the base of the tower, is 1071.5. It's approximately 120 feet tall, although the limit of fill is only 112 feet. We always leave a buffer there for expansion and whatnot. Within the township, we have elevations as low as 915 feet, and then we have a high elevation of 1,105. And our high elevations are red here. Those are basically the situations where we're going to probably run into some trouble delivering water. What it would require is some sort of booster station or something to basically increase the volume and pressure. The original location of the water tower was trying to hit somewhere around this red area, but was moved in, consequently, now that area there is probably our most prone area because there is water there. It is our lowest pressure under normal conditions. But one of the key factors is to realize, when you go to these red zones, you're going to require some infrastructure upgrades to increase the pressure. On the flip side of it, going downhill, your pressure actually increases, and it increases to a point where it could become dangerous to the system. We do have that issue heading west or east on M59. Right now, at the end of the line, we are pushing right now about 85 to 90 PSI. I'm not 100% comfortable, but our system is fairly new, all things considered. In the future, we will probably have to install some sort of pressure-reducing valve on the mainline along M59 to lower pressures, especially if we try and stretch it all the way down to our eastern boundary. Any questions on that? I kind of covered that quickly, but...
So I just had something I want to ask about this.
Sure.
So does the tower elevation, does that affect that, those pressure things that you're talking about? Because when you say that, you know, it was originally looked at at being in that Cullen Road 59 area, when it was contemplated there, it was a shorter tank.
Okay.
So when it was relocated to the present location, height was added to the tank?
No, and certainly, that's a good topic there. Not to dive too much into it, but yes, the general consensus is if you hire an engineer to say, build us a water tower, tell us where the best spot is, they're going to go right for a red spot. Certainly, there's other issues that come into play like ours. What the tower does is it can regulate the pressure coming out. The tower is capable of boosting pressure. At 112 feet, it's roughly 48.3 PSI. We regulate that because we would over-pressurize the system. It has the capability, in the event that there's a fire or something of that nature, it will allow more water to come out, volume-wise, but it's still regulated by pressure. So there's two different components. Long story short, yes, they made the tower taller to have the same effect. If there's a fire, unfortunately, it's a very minor side effect, but anytime you're pushing water uphill, you're going to lose your PSI, and basically, there is somewhat of a slight hurdle. We really don't have too much of an issue here, because like I say, if there's a fire in the Heartland Estates area or somewhere at the higher elevation, the tower has the capability to release more as needed. Just for your simple day-to-day, it's regulated to only, it's regulated to maintain a preset PSI. So basically, moving it, they would have adjusted the PSI a little differently. So it doesn't make that big of a difference, other than the fact now we're pushing water uphill. Water obviously likes to naturally go downhill, so it just creates a small hurdle. If that property to the east of Heartland Estates was ever to develop, we'd probably have to look into some sort of booster station to feed those homes there, or whatever kind of development was there. As it stands right now, if we brought in something in the neighborhood of, we'll say, 30 REUs, which would be the equivalent of maybe a large medical facility, or 30 residential homes, we would not be able to meet the fire flows there. With the addition of the River Church, we pretty much tapped out the west end of our system for meeting fire flows. If we have any more development over there, we're probably going to have to look into that. And which brings up another issue, there's a big difference between meeting the fire flows and then providing just domestic water. So we could provide domestic water in that area all day long. It's the fire flows that we're going to have issue with.
So I hate to keep on asking you questions, but I mean, part of my whole thought of wanting you to come here and talk to the Planning Commission is so that we get an understanding of things that come before us and how they affect this.
Absolutely, that's what I'm there for.
So when you say if anything else happens, you know, or that the River Church tapped us out, there's a proposal, I mean, there's kind of conceptually a thought that there's going to be some residential development behind there?
Yes, to the north of the River Church.
Right. So are you saying that if that comes, that we're going to have to do something to meet the needs there as far as, as you say, fire flow?
Yes. Most likely, what we'll have to do is have a hydraulic study done, which we did when River Church came on, and that's where we determined that it will work, but you're going to meet them with very minimal margin. So yes, any future development would most likely require an additional hydraulic study, as well as probably some infrastructure improvements to go in there.
Could you provide the normal daily usage water and just have a problem with the fire flow?
Most likely. I'm pretty confident to say that. It would really depend on what they were proposing. You know, if it's 50 homes versus 100, that's a pretty big difference.
We haven't seen a lot of residential development around here, but is it possible to not put hydrants in a neighborhood, put water in but not put hydrants and tanker your water in from the River Church back into the subdivision?
No, honestly, that would come down to a decision of the fire marshal, who would oversee that. Our design and engineering standards require that the hydrants would go in.
If you have water there?
Yes. If we're going to create some sort of variance, the fire marshal would certainly weigh in on that.
What would it take to increase that pressure, a pumping station or increase the main size?
No, the main size, actually, we have the volume, and that's where your main size comes in. We don't have the pressure. So what we basically have to do is do some sort of booster pump station, just probably simple VFDs, variable frequency drives to, you know, add demand, and very common in any water system where you have elevation changes. There's basically two devices, a pressure-reducing valve, otherwise known as a PRV, and a booster station. One lowers pressure, one raises it. Very simple. The booster station tends to be more money. Pressure-reducing valve is not motorized. It's just basically a valve that you can set it to whatever the incoming pressure is, outgoing will be that set PSI that you dial it into. So you could dial it down to, say, 65 PSI, and if we feed it 100, 65 is only coming out the other side. So they're more of a mechanical, there's no motors or anything associated with those. So those are actually cheaper to do, which is why people tend to put their water tower on the bigger spot, because the booster stations are much more expensive to do. And please, don't hesitate to ask questions.
Okay, I'll think about that.
Yeah.
The properties at Heartland Township just sold to the Mayberry Development Company. So they've expressed an interest in extending water main to those properties at Fenton, Pleasant Valley Road.
Yes.
Do we know at this point whether that extension would necessitate the pressure-reducing valve, or is it too early to know that?
We would, any new development that comes in, like of a large scale like that, we would require a hydraulic study to see what it would do at the end of the line, just for reassurance. Most likely, it's not going to be higher, because what M59 does as you head towards that is it dips down and then slowly comes back up. When I say it comes back up, I'll show it on the next slide. I want to say it's to the tune of like 30, 40 feet. So while you may have 90 PSI in the dip, again, you're climbing uphill, it may drop to 75 or 80 by the time you get to the end. And it's, just for Sega arguments, 2.31 feet equals 1 PSI change, whether up or down. Which, next slide there. So which equates to, just by elevation change, we, if we were to feed the same pressure in the lowest elevation versus the highest elevation, we'd have an 82 PSI difference. So you can kind of see that's kind of a bigger deal. And it's not, it's just the nature of a water system. Happens all the time where, you know, development comes in and, you know, you can usually put parameters on there, hey, this is what you're going to need to do, improvements to the infrastructure to meet this demand. And what I did is kind of went from 23 and 59 in each direction, just to give you kind of a quick synopsis of what we have here. And I'm just going to walk over here so I can read it a little better. So at the end of the line here, we are looking at an elevation of 990 feet, and that's at our boundary. And here, where the water main ends, we're at 975. So it actually drops another, or I'm sorry, goes up 20 feet. So again, if we have roughly 85 PSI, every 2.31 feet that we go up, you're going to drop 1 PSI. So I don't think we'll have a problem pressure-wise. I certainly think we're going to be able to provide those properties with pressure. There's some other anomalies that come into play. When we did the 2010 Water Master Plan, it indicated adding 16-inch water main down 59 and then looping it all the way around. Currently, there's only 12-inch water main there. So the extension out to that property, it would have to be a decision made that are we going to require them to put 16-inch water main in, or would we put 12 in? My recommendation would be, if we're going to loop it around throughout the township like we planned on in 2010, we would adhere to that. But I believe that, quite frankly, that there's a lot of expansion in the 2010 plan. It was actually calling for water all the way up to Clyde Road and all the way down almost to Commerce. So I don't know if we're to that point, which the 2010 plan also calls for parallel water mains, one on the north side and south side of 59. Just for redundancies, if we were to have a compromise in the pipe, you're now shutting off the rest of everything east or wherever that pipe break may be to service that. Another alternative we could do is run a 12-inch right now down to these properties. If we decide to carry out the 2010 Water Master Plan design, we could put a 16-inch to meet that capacity on the opposing side.
Who pays for all that typically?
Every situation is a little unique. In Heartland, right now, what we're most likely going to propose is that the developer pay for it, and that there would be a reimbursement-type policy or agreement set up when future taps are made by the other properties that you pass along the way.
Is installing water main expensive? I mean, practical?
Depending, you can be anywhere from $85 a linear foot for a smaller main, like 8-inch, up to 16 will probably run you about, I think last we were looking at about $126 a linear foot. So it can be. And that's with, that's under normal circumstances. That's not boring under wetlands or, you know, adding any stubs off for future developments.
So if you've got property that's close to the water main or on the water main, your development costs are going to be less as a developer than they are if you take one of these other parcels we're looking at and we're requiring you to now install a half ton.
Right, exactly. If you don't have water there, it's, in theory, it'll be cheaper, because a well or something to meet fire protection, if you were to build a commercial building, would be quite expensive as well. And that's something the River Church was challenged with when they first came in, was in order to meet the fire flows, their private well had to be upsized and they had to have their own storage tank. It was actually cheaper for them to run the water main. So they were really pushing for anything they could to extend that water main out. So it's kind of a, when you're looking at a residential home, yeah, it could be argued that, you know, private well may be cheaper, but when you're doing commercial development, it's not always the case if you're based on your fire flows and what the fire marshal would require.
Didn't we do a quick and, or didn't you do a quick and dirty calculation of how much it would be to get the water main to the sewer properties at 59 and Fenton?
Yeah, basically, right here, the second line item, to go to the border, we'd be approximately 3.5 miles. Depending on what size water main, we're probably looking in the neighborhood of 1.1 million to 1.8 million. I believe to the sewer properties, we could actually do the 12-inch for 1.1 million. So that's probably something along the lines of what they'd be looking at as a cost to extend the water main down that far.
And how many lots are they thinking they're getting out of there?
We haven't seen any kind of plan yet, but they bought, what, 500 sewer REUs?
Yeah, in the roughest part of it. And again, the master plan calls for 16-inch parallel mains. The unfortunate circumstance is, parallel mains will do great while we have no other development down there. If we were to have a pipe break, we could close and isolate that particular section, repair it while, you know, a very few number of people would be out of water service. If we only do one side, or, you know, if we were to extend it right down to the sewer properties right now and we had a break right by the ice arena, it would basically shut the whole water main down, all the, you know, those people would all be out of service while we fix that pipe.
Do both communities run parallel? Is that a common thing?
Um...
Or did we just have a really aggressive engineer?
We have a very unique water system. I kind of have to preface this with, it looks like a plus sign. From a design perspective, it's not ideal. One thing you don't want to have in a water main system is dead ends. Dead-end water mains basically equate to stagnant water. The chlorine residual drops off over time, especially when you have dead ends in a residential area, because they're designed for the fire flows. So they're built, you know, overzealous, yet if they're just feeding 1-inch copper lines, these residents, they don't pull enough water. We have a very aggressive hydrant flushing program to keep bringing fresh water down these dead ends, but the ideal goal is to have a looped water main whenever you can. And that was one of kind of my suggestions or recommendations when the property to the west, the Chestnut, when they came, I was really encouraging them that I would rather see a looped water main rather than extending it across M59. If it was one or the other, my recommendation was for a looped water main. The last thing I want to do is extend a dead end, if I can avoid it, because it's just not good. Not good for the design system, any pressure fluctuations. You end up with a bathtub effect, where you get a surge of water, it goes down, well, when it hits the end of the pipe, you're going to have a pressure spike, probably in the neighborhood of 150 PSI, which is just not good for the system. So they're pressure-tested to 200 PSI when they're brand-new, but like a new car, a lot of things are more durable when that's brand-new. As things start to wear out, minor corrosion gets involved, and, you know, 20 years down the road, they can't take that sort of PSI. And again, I just kind of touched briefly on this. Running the water main to the east, the issues we have is just a huge elevation difference. You know, if we're at, this is just a quick example, at the end of the line, we're at 975, if we have 88 PSI, to go to our boundary, we'll, to a 955 elevation, which is in the middle of 55, you're pushing a pressure of 96 PSI, which, you know, 100 PSI is really, you don't want to go over 100. In fact, it's recommended to stay around 70 to 75 PSI in a normal distribution system. So we're on the high side now. I think we're pretty fortunate and we're blessed because our system is new and we're able to sustain this pressure at this time. I think it might be hundreds on the road. And again, recommendation, just a simple PRV, somewhere with a discharge pressure of approximately 62 PSI. That way, when you have elevation changes, even at your highest, or your highest pressure point, would only be about 75 PSI.
What kind of pressure do they have down here at Heritage Meadows?
Yes. Heritage Meadows here, we're consistently seeing about 72 to 78, depending on if it's a peak hour or not, when the system's relatively idle, like in the middle of the night. We try and set the pressures to kind of drop a little bit in the evening hours when nobody's using the water, but we'll say noon, after everybody's already woke up, did their laundry, showered, and they're off to work, they're going to see about 78. As they're using it, say 6:00 AM, when everybody wakes up, and that's usually a peak time because everybody turns their irrigation systems on first thing in the morning, it'll probably drop to about 72 PSI.
Do they have, I mean, I thought that they had PRVs over there.
Now, in, they do. What they have is individual residential pressure-reducing valves. As the 1-inch copper line comes into the house, they put a device on there. However, that doesn't help our, our main system is still, for all intents and purposes, a higher pressure, and what they do is they tone those to... And what they do is they tone those down to about 60 PSI. So they're, because basically appliances don't like triple-digit PSI's whatsoever. We've actually had a few instances when those residential PRVs have failed, the springs break over time, and people's hot water blow-off valves start springing and they call us, saying, my basement's flooding out. But yeah, they do offer a residential PSI and that's been an ongoing kind of discussion point in many different communities is, do you lower your system pressure or do you put it on the homeowner to protect their own appliances and whatnot? My feeling is, my role is to protect our water system. I still, I'm not comfortable, in another 10 years, I'm not sure if our system will be able to sustain these pressures. Again, it's fairly, we're still in the new car phase, it's starting to get a few miles on it, and I think down the road, we're going to have some issues. One point I wanted to, or one key point I want to say is, all our water main is duct iron pipe. It was all put in at the same time. It is the strongest pipe available right now. When you get into a lot of the older Detroit systems or municipalities that are fed from Detroit system, they actually use concrete pipe and there's stressed concrete, asbestos concrete, or AC pipe is the political term for it. But that cannot take pressures over 75 PSI. So different kind of animal. We're fortunate, where when our system was put in, it was all the newest pipe. So it is the strongest pipe on the market today. And then if we look south in that US-23 and M59 corridor, basically we run into a similar situation. It's about three miles of pipe that we'd have to run just to reach our border. Again, you're looking at about 1 million to 1.6 million, depending on what size pipe you go. And this is again, where the master plan comes into play from 2010. This was part of the big looping of the M59 corridor and it actually calls for 16- and 20-inch water mains. If we were to put that in today and not ever do any other improvements, it would simply be oversized pipe. It's not necessary. We can meet demands basically with 12-inch pipe. It's just for future flows. If we start to head east from the south corridor, the south point, we want to have those bigger water mains. So it's, again, a future discussion that we're having internally to determine what is our ultimate water district boundary that we see for Heartland Township and to try and design accordingly for that. But again, one of the, one of the factors in here is it's just extending that dead end, which is just, it's not a healthy situation for any water main system. Especially if we ended up with a very small development down there, you have three miles of pipe that's basically meeting fire flows for anything along there, along the old 23, and it's only feeding, say, 20 residential homes, you're going to end up with some stagnant water and we would have to aggressively flush that dead end hydrant. And again, we also have the elevation differences. I would recommend, once again, this would be a perfect opportunity for a pressure-reducing valve. It's the lowest-cost option to protect our water system. And when we look north, now we're going to head north from that corridor. The question always was to kind of give an analysis, if we were to bring water to Clyde Road. So to Clyde Road, we're approximately four miles from where the water main dead ends currently on Old 23, heading north from 59. We're looking a cost range of 2.1 to 3 million dollars. And again, this is a unique circumstance because the Water Master Plan proposes 20-inch and 24-inch water mains. Anytime you get to a, larger than a 16-inch main, you get into what's considered a transmission main, which means you can't tap with copper 1-inch pipes. You would have to do extensions of the water main, like 8-inch water mains or 10 or 12s off that. So it would only be, if there were houses along that old 23, they wouldn't be allowed to tap their 1-inch copper pipe to that 24-inch main. Because the theory is if something ever happened to that, not only would it, it would basically wreak havoc on the system because if that pipe ever cracked, or if that person had a leak and they weren't taking care of it promptly, we would end up with a compromised system on a 24-inch, which is just, it has the ability to drain that tower very quickly, I'll phrase it that way, if something were to happen. So what we would recommend is, if there was a development, anytime it's larger, 16, or I'm sorry, larger than a 16-inch water main, you would have to run an 8-inch water main off of it and then you could tap into the 8-inch water main. And what we'd do is put an isolation valve there, require that, so we could actually isolate that particular development if there was ever an issue in there. But again, the dreaded dead end of the plus sign, we are extending that. And like I say, the Water Master Plan, what it does is it shows, I have a slide up here, I'll show it, probably should have come in a little earlier in retrospect, but if you're looking at that plus sign, all these, basically, you know, what I'm proposing here is just showing, extending that plus sign, it's just a larger one. The 2010 Master Plan actually loops all the sides, which would really make the system more reliable. Anytime you have a water main that's looped, it's really more reliable.
They get reliable, but, you know, if you go up four miles, then it's 2.1 to 3 million to go one stretch. Somehow you got to come across and come back down. Who pays for all that?
Exactly. And that's internally, what we're doing is, you know, the 2010 Water Master Plan, I think, was kind of like, what do we envision? I think it goes out to the year 2030. Internally, we've discussed maybe revising that and coming up with a more realistic approach of what, how far we actually see this water system being extended. And again, this is actually, we get into some very low elevations up here. So if you were at 67 PSI at the very end of the existing water main, at its lowest point, you would be well over 100 PSI, which is just, that's not a safe operating pressure we would have. It would definitely be required before we actually move forward. We would have to do a pressure-reducing valve. And most likely, just a quick analysis, you know, probably in that, find an elevation of about 970 feet and install a PRV that discharges at 54 PSI. Because it's still going to drop more at the, you know, in the hole, if you will, or that elevation of 915, you'll still be around 60, 65 PSI. So this is the 2010 Water Master Plan, and you can see what I mean when I say it kind of looped around and tied everything together. The purple water mains are actually the 16-inch water mains. It was actually proposed to larger transmission mains throughout the township. And this is where we'll basically, we'll look to revise this map and say, what is a, for all intents and purposes, we'll say a more realistic approach. What do we see being developed and the need for water? But this is what they proposed back in 2010. And that's basically what a lot of these costs were based off of, when you see these million-dollar price tags. But, you know, I don't, I think we'll certainly end up with some pressure issues if we were to ever run water main in this area. The San Marino is much higher than the water tower. Not that it's a big deal, we can still certainly feed it, it's just you have to do some infrastructure Any questions on that?
Where does the 16-inch end going to the east?
It's proposed that...
No, right now, where does it end?
Right now, we don't have a 16-inch main.
No, it's 16 at all?
This is 12, and it dead ends at that 12. That 12-inch was put in, but it was only put in on the north side of the road. The master plan calls for it on the south side of the road. Where we do have a 16-inch main is right here at Cullen, from basically the water plant to Cullen Road, but it never went past Cullen Road. It fed, or it fed up Cullen and then into Heartland Estates, and that's actually where River Church tied in, was at the, forgive me, I think it's Anna Maria Court at the very end. So that's where they tied in to feed their facility. In the grand scheme of things, looking back in retrospect, perhaps we may have required some sort of development to extend that 16-inch main for future development. But, you know, I guess hindsight's always 20/20, so.
I got a question.
Sure, absolutely.
Have you looked at all at, or maybe I'm just not thinking of it correctly, but any extension of, any future water line off of that T shape to be both sides of the road, like say a north and south side, so that you create that loop effect on any extension?
Well, you know, we have. And the issue you run into with that is, let's say we run a 12-inch water main down to the sewer properties and anybody along M59 is going to tap into that 12-inch main. So then you would spend like 1.2 million to run a parallel one that no one's going to tap into. It's kind of a large expense for just the redundancy, if you will. So it's often thought, maybe we would take that money and just start going into other areas versus just running it parallel down the same line. I mean, ultimately, yeah, somebody might not have to directional bore under 59, it may save them that cost. But in the grand scheme of things, if it's available on either side of 59, we would tell that property owner that water is available. You would just have to directional bore under 59.
So the ongoing maintenance costs of dead ending in four places does not match the initial cost to like extend two lines instead of one?
No, I think the maintenance on a, well, again, maintenance is a very tough topic to put on our water system right now because it goes back to that new car theory. We're now getting into, I've been with the township about two years and the first year I was here, they had a few maintenance improvements on the water system, I want to say to the tune of about $15,000. And I know this year, we're probably going to be in the neighborhood of about $40,000 with stuff that has just been consumable, wearable items, corrosion, whatever it may be. But we also had another anomaly this year in Heritage Meadows. Basically, Heritage Meadows used to be a private well. And when the well, they decommissioned that well and connected to the water system, they were never required to bring their water system up to today's, or the township's engineering and design standards and therefore kind of playing catch-up in that particular area. So the $40,000 figure that we have this year is probably a little inflated due to that particular development. But again, it's very tough to, I anticipate, you know, I can, you know, propose what we may see in the future, but I mean, I'm pretty surprised we haven't had more issues with the high levels of pressure we have at the dead ends. So it's, ultimately, I mean, I guess it would be up to, you know, the township to collectively decide, do we want to put in an extra $1.2 million worth of water main? And then the other problem we run into is who's going to pay for the parallel main, especially when the original main that went in, people have already tied into, they're not going to be happy if there was an SAD or something along that lines, you know, paying for the redundant line. But yes, certainly, it would make the system...
I just was trying to understand the difference in the maintenance costs, because you were saying a couple of times that dead ending a system's not, you know, the best way to go. So I'm wondering if there's a way to eliminate that as we expand.
Oh, absolutely. In kind of with the Chestnut development, I'll give you an example, even if we have a small loop, it's better than a dead end. But Chestnut, I said, listen, to extend that across the front of your property, even though that's in our ordinance, it's required, I would rather see you connect, take it to the south and tie into the neighborhood there. It creates a small loop. Looking at our sewer properties, when they do submit some sort of proposal, I will encourage them to loop that back around 259. So at least we have, say, half a mile of a loop at the very end. That would be my recommendation to them. So I think that'll help. Yeah, it's not as great as having, you know, two miles of parallel water mains, but it'll certainly reduce the impact of just having a single hydrant and a valve at that end.
It would seem hard to, it's hard for me to picture any municipality that's in a position of creating a looped system because your, I mean, your wells, your treatment is always one point and then you're going out from there. So are you saying that, you know, people that are doing this right from the get-go are saying, if this person over here wants water, they're running a big loop to get to it? It just, who's absorbing that initial cost of creating a loop rather than a straight line?
Well, not all municipalities have just a single point location. A lot of municipalities have multiple points of community wells.
They never, that mean, do they start out with multiple points?
No, what they would do is that they wouldn't try and install three miles of water main, they would build another treatment facility. And then over time, as things develop, you would join them. That's basically their design. Some of them keep isolated, you know, and they just have what they call different districts, if you will. They'll say, you know, we have three different water districts that are basically three independent systems within a municipal boundaries. So we're in somewhat of a unique situation because all of our wells are centrally located. You know, if we were to build another treatment facility, we may not necessarily need a tower per se. We would just have like an iron removal and a chlorinating spot before we dump it into distribution system. But that's what a lot of other municipalities do. You'll see one tower, which is basically, you know, once they're connected, they can feed fire flows, but they'll have multiple treatment facilities, not nearly as big as ours. We, Heartland Township, when it was designed, the water system, it was centered around one treatment facility. We have two filter vessels right now. The original building and what's there today can actually accommodate six vessels. So it was designed for future expansion. It was never in the master plan to add additional treatment facilities. So we're somewhat of a unique animal and I think each water system is somewhat unique. You know, like I say, with different elevations or where you put your towers and it's really tough to compare with anybody on the DWSD or Detroit Water System. That's just a whole different animal when it comes to pressures and volumes, so. Really, if we're going to do an apples-to-apples comparison, you'd have to look at like a community, our neighbors who have basically have similar setups as us.
But they probably also don't stretch their water out to their boundaries like this is showing.
Exactly.
Seems like you need to have quite a concentration of customers...
Yes, yes.
...to make it pay for itself, looking at some of these numbers.
And, you know, that's, that's kind of what I tell people when, when they come in and I get a lot of complaints ironically for water rates and sewer rates and, you know, they're saying, I moved here from X city or X township and my rates were this much there. And it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. They're not getting a better deal on the pipe or anything. It's just, take our sewer system, we pump at 16 miles to the treatment facility. Well, in theory, a section of pipe costs the same for that township as it costs us. It's just when you get into more condensed area, they have more people to divide the cost up. And I often tell people that, you know, the utilities out here, we don't have the density which, you know, equates to a lesser cost to the infrastructure itself. We have less people and parcels to divide it up amongst. So I hope that makes sense. I hope I answered your question there. And again, the master plan did indicate a potential future treatment site right here, that little box there, as an option. One of the, the cost is basically what it comes down to is, if you guys do that and sink a well out on the other end of town, you either put a treatment facility there or you would have to pump it all the way back to the tower before you can introduce it to the distribution system because it has to be treated somewhere. This, it was basically for future development. Most likely, if we were to put all this water main in, we would exceed the six filters, especially if we had all these homes in this area all connected to water. The existing treatment facility, certainly, we would exceed the capacity of the six. We'd have to do some sort of addition. So the thought process was, in the year 2030, if all this was developed, that we would require another treatment facility. Right now, given that we have 616 actual connections, it's cost prohibitive. There's no two ways about it. So this is just kind of my, my analysis, goals and recommendations. I think we need to revisit the 2010 Water Master Plan internally as a township and determine what is actually feasible. And again, loop water mains, I can't stress that enough. Even if it's 500 homes at the end of 59, if we loop it through that development and then dump it back into the same 12-inch main, it will absorb some of that impact. It will certainly behoove the system versus a valve and a hydrant at the end. Reduce apparent water loss. Right now, we have a minor issue with water loss. I think we're on track to becoming more accountable. It really doesn't affect any developments, that's a more of an operating issue. We believe a lot of that water loss is due to water meters in our system. We used to have six different brands of water meters and sewer-only customers previously were required to purchase their own meter, which they tend to find used meters or something else. Meters become used because they wear out and when they wear out, they actually slow down. They don't speed up. So you can actually, it won't, it'll under-register. So we believe that's where part of our water loss is. I can't stress enough, pressure-reducing valves, it's coming. Just as our system ages, it's not going to be able to sustain these pressures. Just as our system ages, it's not going to be able to sustain these pressures. And then it comes up on occasion, the feasibility of connecting Mill Point. If their private well were to ever go bad, that's always going to be in our back pocket that we would probably have to come up with some sort of solution to connect them.
Um, speaking of Mill Point, I noticed that you have them on your map. Why, why, is it on the map because of the fire hydrants?
They do have hydrants and they do have a water system. It's just a private system. It is not-
Completely private?
Yes. There's, they don't-
On the map then?
Yeah, they pay their water bill to a private company. It's not ours. But it'll end up, I, in the, uh, I, I see it as a potential to end up like Heritage Meadows where something may go wrong with their well. They're not, the cost to fix it or put in a new one, or if they end up with arsenic and they're not allowed by DEQ to sink another well there, they'll certainly be inquiring. In fact, we already get quite a few residential, uh, customers in there calling us to say, hey, how do we hook up? And once they realize that, you know, there's actually bylaws that they have to do and, you know, a master deed and what they have to do to abandon or get out of that agreement. Um, it's, right now, it's cost prohibitive for them, but eventually I, I foresee it in the future that something may happen. It is always a-
Wondering why it shows up on the map? It's not part of the system, I'm just wondering why it's on the map.
It shows up on the map because the map was derived from the fire department. Because I actually turn on a fire hydrant layer when I make their, their maps for fire hydrants. When you see it on the GIS, as you're saying, that's where it's from.
Yeah, your blue lines on all these includes Mill Point.
Yes, yes, because it is technically, it's a community water source, even though it's a private, when I do the fire hydrant maps and numbering, and we still kind of keep an eye on it as far as it's in our, you know, within our township boundaries, but we just recognize that it is private.
So they can create the pressures for a fire through their private well, through their hydrants then?
When it was originally developed, they could. I, I don't know, we don't really oversee it. DEQ steps in on private wells. Um, I can kind of go back real quick here, I'll show you. We do have another example, uh, I'm going to try and hold still here. All of this here, the school properties, that's all private. Um, when they came in to do their water main, they chose to go with six-inch water main to feed that, and that was against our design and engineering standards, but it was acceptable by DEQ. Um, basically, there's a valve right across the street from the fire station that feeds that. We call it a complex and it is all private. The school is responsible for that water main, even the hydrants on it. But again, it's shown on the map because, um, that's a unique situation. They take our water. We send them basically one master bill. We have a master meter, if you will, and that's how we feed them. But it is a private system. They are responsible for the maintenance and they also have to have operators there through, that are licensed through a state of Michigan because it is registered as a private system.
So Bob, Mayberry, um, decides to, um, um, build out and, and extend water main. You basically add 500 more users to 600. I mean, um, what kind of investments are going to be needed treatment-wise to, you know, handle them?
Well, DEQ has, um, basically they have a, a red light that kind of triggers in our annual report and our annual, they do a site visit, which we meet with them every year. And when you hit 80% of your maximal allowable, uh, pumpage for your, your max day demand, not peak hour, they start saying and suggesting, this is what you need to do to your system. Um, we're already in talks about that for future developments and it always comes back. Our crutch right now, our handicap is our filter system. Um, so basically that's what it would require. Forgive me, these are from July this year and we're still, it's an ongoing process. We're investing. One of my recommendations was to install a mixer in our water tower. Last year, we had one of our coldest, snowiest winters ever. We actually formed a layer of ice in the top of the tower and what it was doing was freezing on a sensor and our computer system said, that tower's full. We don't need to fill it, even though it was actually draining. We had to do manual overrides and it required additional staff to come in there. Um, my recommendation was to install a mixer and the mixer was installed two weeks ago. So that is kind of off the list. Um, adding the filter vessel, most likely when these 500 homes come online, we will be required to add a filter vessel. The original quote came in at 750,000 and that's what we were proposing, but after further review and working with different contractors for the last three months, we believe we can actually add a single filter vessel for about 385,000. So that's going to be probably our next, uh, next improvement I foresee coming online, um, especially if Mayberry comes on. But again, you know, we would have all those water REUs. Their sewer REUs are on the property. They have no water REUs right now. So you would also have, um, quite a bit of money coming in with the purchase of the water REUs and that's how we would basically look to fund that.
Can they propose a private well and private system?
They could.
Or do we not allow that?
No, they could. In fact, that's, that's what was originally proposed with the River Church. They were going to do a private well system and whatnot. Um, what they ran into at River Church was a little different because they had the fire system, fire suppression and to meet all that flow. Quite frankly, they could do that. They could do individual wells with approval from DEQ, um, you know, as long as everything tested all right.
Well, I imagine those are going to be small lots.
Yeah, and, and then you get into that particular aspect of it is, you know, lot size and lot coverage and, um, you know, from a marketing standpoint, there's a lot of people who say, hey, if I'm going to be on municipal sewers, I want municipal water. Not always the case, but certainly there is that angle as well, so.
Do, do communities allow these private water districts to be built? I mean, should, should we be forcing it through the, the municipal system versus allow? I mean, you could end up with numerous private little systems all around town and you'll be the guys that in the end have to come back and rescue them when they have their problems.
Exactly. And that's from the township perspective, it's, it's the discussions we're having right now, especially after the Heritage Meadow and what we're paying now because they were never required at the time to bring it up to our standards. We found, um, just as an example, we're finding hydrants that are inoperable, caps and RCs, hydrants that are broken. We found valves under sidewalks and driveways and, um, we can't, you can't legally permitted through DEQ work on a hydrant unless the pressure is taken off of it. Well, if the valve's under the sidewalk, we end up tearing up the sidewalk to raise the valve so it's accessible and then we have to repour that flag of concrete. So it's a very long, ongoing process. Um, and even the ones that aren't under sidewalks, they're buried. We found some that are buried up to a foot under the grass and everything. So it's, it's a tedious process. It's something that, uh, moving forward in the future, if somebody were to connect like Mill Point, we would just make them, um, basically meet our design and engineering standards and do a walkthrough before we'd accept that. So that's kind of the preventative or corrective measure in place to, to prevent that. The other thing we would have is when we, if we were to add a new filter vessel, we'd want to replace the filter media. Uh, filter media can last anywhere from 10 to 15 years. The two vessels we have online right now, the filter media has been in there for 12 years. So if we were to add a brand-new filter with brand-new media, water's going to take the path of least resistance. We're going to kind of overtax that new filter so it becomes contaminated at the equal amounts as the other two. So the recommendation is they're near the end of their lifespan already. When we do the new filter vessel, we would just replace the filter media in all three of them. I think it would behoove the system and not overtax any individual filter vessel. And that was supposed to be the short version, but, uh, you guys have any other questions? I mean, I covered a lot of stuff very quickly. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot more in-depth analysis to this, but I just wanted to kind of preview this so you know what the issues are with our current system looking forward, um, just things to take into consideration as developments come online.
This is obviously good information for the planning commission to have, uh, given what we're going to talk about here tonight and at future meetings when we're looking at, uh, updating our future land use plan, our future land use map, having a good sense of, um, what our infrastructure capabilities are now and what their potential is for the future, I think, um, plays a part in those discussions.
Thank you. I was, I thought it was interesting.
Well, thank you. I, I, sometimes it can be dry. No pun intended. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, well, let's move to item 8.2, 2015 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Single Family Residential Land Use Review. Back to David.
Let me get to it here. So as the planning commission is aware, we've got something of a, a schedule that we've established for doing the update to the future land use plan and the future land use map. And the schedule for this evening calls for looking at three of these six, uh, single-family residential land use designations of our, uh, current comprehensive plan. Those specifically are the estate residential, rural residential, and low suburban density residential, um, future land use designations. And what we hope to have a discussion about here tonight is whether those existing designations, as they're currently written, are still applicable. As the planning commission is aware that those were adopted as part of the comprehensive plan update of 2011. So then the question is, are, are the, um, is the verbiage describing each of those designations still applicable in 2014, 2000, going into 2015? And what the planning department has provided is, is a analysis of those three and something of a, a build-out analysis of the three. And then took that build-out analysis and compared it to what the Zimmerman-Volk residential market analysis called for. Uh, and in, with these three residential designations, uh, in particular, we looked at what Zimmerman-Volk was calling their mid and, and high-end, um, single-family detached. And what we're hoping to analyze was whether or not we have enough property in the township that's designated for the, um, sufficient land in the township designated for the type of single-family, mid-to-high-end, uh, single-family that the market currently demands based on the Zimmerman-Volk analysis. So there's a, an analysis for each of those three residential designations, uh, in order, the rural residential, then the estate residential, and the low suburban density residential. Each one of them has a, a cover page and then we also provided the actual text from the 2011 comprehensive plan as it's written and as it's adopted today. And I can go into each, each of the three. In general, what the, the staff found was that the, based on the kind of quick and dirty build-out analysis, there is sufficient acreage within the township in each of these three designations to accommodate the market demand for the types of houses that would be likely to be built within those three designations. Within rural residential, uh, that's the, the least dense of our future land use residential designations. Uh, the, what it envisions is one, one dwelling per three acres. We have almost 1,000 acres of that designation within the township right now, mostly up in the northwest quadrant of the township. This area here. Um, so it envisions, uh, large lot residential, agricultural-type uses, um, and then moving on to what the Zimmerman-Volk study recommended was anywhere from 120 to 140 new units over the next, uh, five to six years that would essentially fit into that, uh, that particular land use designation. And so between the rural residential, the estate residential, and the low-density residential, uh, future land use categories, our determination is that we do have sufficient acreage within the township, um, for the rural residential land use designation to accommodate what the, what the market will ultimately, uh, call for over the next five to six years. So I would pause there and see if the planning commission has any further thoughts, A, on, um, the, the description of the designation, whether that needs to be updated, amended, changed, um, based on what we know in 2014 going into 2015? And whether the planning commission has any thoughts on whether the amount of land and the area of land currently designated for rural residential is what we would likely want to see on the 2015 update to the future land use map? If there is not, or at least not at this particular moment, for the estate residential, very comparable to the rural residential designation, other than almost half of the township is currently designated estate residential. So that's this pale, pale yellow, um, that compromises the vast majority of the northeast quadrant, a good portion of the southeast quadrant, this portion of the southwest, and at least half of the, the northwest quadrant. Um, a little bit less density, one, one property, or one home per two acres, again, agricultural uses and large lot residential. And again, because of its similarity to the rural residential designation, um, and relative to the Zimmerman-Volk analysis, it's the conclusion of the planning department that there is sufficient land with this land use designation to accommodate what the market demand would be for it. So again, the potential conversation of the planning commission is whether there's agreement on that and also whether the 2011 description of the estate residential, future land use designation still applies going into 2015.
I agree with the staff's conclusions.
You do?
Okay. And then finally, low suburban density residential. So this is more of the, uh, the vivid yellow, I suppose. Um, mostly on the north side of the M59 corridor, a healthy portion of it down around Long Lake. Most of this is already built out. There's not a lot of vacant, developable land. There's potential for, uh, land assembly through here perhaps. Um, but a little over 3,000 acres currently with that designation, which is about 13% of the total land area of the township. Uh, a little less dense than the prior two land use designations, one, uh, one house per one to two acres. The, the area that maybe stands out under this designation and still having the potential for development is these properties that we've talked about a little bit before, and that's on the north side of Dunham, uh, just east of the school campus. Uh, we're, we're aware that this particular property where, where Clark Road, Dunham ends has a lot of, uh, wetland and flood plain in it and its development potential may be limited. But as with the first two future land use designations that we discussed, relative to the Zimmerman-Volk analysis and what the market may demand, it's again, the conclusion of staff that there is sufficient land with that designation to accommodate what the market demand will be over the next five to six years.
So if we reclassify that into something else, this parcel east of the current school campus, um, do we still end up with an adequate amount of land in that designation?
It's open to discussion. I think the recommendation of staff is that there would be, given the similarity with this designation and the first two, the estate residential and the rural residential, a little bit smaller lot size potentially here, one-acre parcels rather than two or three-acre. But I, I think that given what, what the market demand is for lots of that size relative to what we have potential for, I don't see a reason why taking that away would change our conclusion. Taking, and when I say take that away, I mean, potentially changing the future land use designation of those Dunham Road properties. And that's the conversation we're going to have in, in the near future. But if the question on the table is whether reclassifying those sometime in the near future would limit the potential for, for one-to-two acre lots, I, I don't know that it does.
Will we reconsider in changing them too?
Well, we, that is one of the, on the other maps that, that we've seen, the hot pink area.
Yes.
Hot pink areas, that's one of the pink areas that is up for a discussion. It doesn't mean anything's going to happen, but it is an item that we, an area we could look at. Since they're making the conclusion that we have enough bright yellow on the map of the township that we're okay, my comment, my question was if we took that away and made it another color, orange, um, do we still, in staff's conclusion, have enough bright yellow?
So you're looking at about, if we, if we-
It's like you're taking a third of it away.
It's a big piece.
You're talking about maybe, let's say, 300 acres. Uh, if each one of these are 80-acre tracks, another 40 here, um, plus this, it's about 300 acres out of the 3,000 total.
There must be a lot of-
Bright yellow, oh, south of, uh, Long Lake there. Or is that, oh, that doesn't look like much either.
And obviously, these are already built out. These are all already platided and, and-
Oh, is that bright yellow on the west side of Long Lake too?
It is.
Oh, okay. The line lines are skewing the color.
Yeah.
So again, and not necessarily- So again, and not necessarily, uh, re-designating it tonight.
Right.
But if it, if we get to the point where we realize, based on future analysis, there are gonna be upcoming at a future meeting, that we need more, let's say, medium suburban density, then if we look toward that area to re-designate, we can give, have this conversation of, are we taking away?
So tonight's question is, are we satisfied that that's enough as currently shown in yellow?
That's one of the questions.
Further discussion on whether it changes is occurring on another night.
Yes, in the future.
And my only question, when we discuss it, will probably be the same one I made the comment on tonight, so...
We would come back at that point and say, let's, let's say for the sake of conversation, we're gonna take, uh, those 300 acres away, let's, let's do a new build-out analysis, assuming that, and see if that changes our recommendation. My prediction is it, it won't change dramatically.
Yeah, and my question on that'll probably hold true on most of the parcels that we're, that are pink on the other map that we're talking about, you know, how does it, what does it do? But, but I'm fine with the staff's conclusion right now as it's drawn, if it's falling in line with the consultants.
Dave, can you zoom in on this area right here? What's in there right now? Let's, uh...
So here's your, here's your special planning area, Fenton and Pleasant Valley. Mostly, uh, there's, there's mostly vacant along M-59. I can pull up the, uh, the aerial.
Here's a small...
This is the Lutheran Church here. Um, you know, mostly large lot, single-family, you know, there's likely houses on each one of these large lots, and that would potentially have the potential for if a developer wanted to do a little bit of land assembly, could, could pull some of this together perhaps.
Well, and I know that's not really the focus of tonight's discussion, but it just, uh, I mean, proximity to M-59, I mean, our discussions about, you know, how much demand is there for basically houses on one to two acres? Um, is that something that maybe we should be looking at as increasing density in that area?
So I can pull it up. My recollection though is that this, I'm trying to get something else going while I'm doing that, um, this collectively was shown as pink, as open for discussion of...
Is it, is it a pink spot?
Yeah. Can, can, I can find it while I'm on the spot here.
I didn't remember that either. I didn't remember, I didn't remember anything pink over there, but...
Well, see if I'm right here, bear with me. It's just a memo. There we go.
There's still some of those maps. I'm here the other day.
Yeah, the old...
So this is, uh, Heartland Meadows, the Mollahom, um, community. And then going back to our map, you're talking in through here.
It is.
It is. Yeah. I didn't remember that. It's right there.
So...
Purple, pink.
Well...
Fuchsia.
So if you made it that, if you changed it to different density there, and then reconsidered next to the high school, now you're eliminating a lot of the...
Well, and I think that's the future discussion where we talk about, do we really want to change this piece, that piece, or not anything? Is, how did you affect the...
Well, but his question is, is, do we feel there's enough right now? Well, on that map, there might be.
Yeah, that's his only question today. Do you agree that there's...
Well, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be short-sighted though.
Well, know that the questions are coming about, well, you start taking this away, now how do you feel, Dave?
Yeah.
You know, that's, so those would be good things to be prepared for as we get into these discussions on the pink parcel.
Come up with other areas that may be...
I mean, it'll be a fair question.
No, just be prepared to come up with other areas that we...
A, a fair question, sure. You know, given the, given the M-59 proximity is one to two acres in that neck of the woods is still appropriate, or something of a little bit higher density. Get that right, we'll be one of the discussions. And I agree that if we're gonna start taking away any one designation, we need to reevaluate whether we're losing too much of it in, in doing so.
Yeah. But for tonight's response to your question, I would agree with staff's conclusion, okay? Just alerting you to the future conversation.
I will never argue when you agree.
Well, it's late in the year and I had to...
Story of my life. What we also provided you with is a, a table for not just these, uh, future land use designations that we're discussing this evening, but all of them, kind of a cheat sheet, if you will. And that cheat sheet has been updated since the packets were distributed, not, not dramatically so, particularly the column that speaks to the, um...
Projected zoning.
Projected zoning districts. We did some updating there. Um, but I'd like to think that's helpful, not just for tonight, but, but moving ahead, having those all summarized that way, particularly as they pertain to the total acreage and the percentage of the township, and how many units per, per acre. So disregard the one that doesn't have the, uh, November 8th date down in the corner. And the other thing I was hoping to get some consensus on tonight was at our November 6th meeting, we looked at two of our residential development policies. One was the, or excuse me, the residential development policy and then the settlement area development policy. The Planning Commission had some suggestions on some, uh, changes to those. Planning Department has, uh, incorporated those changes, and if we see any further changes, we can discuss them tonight, or otherwise consider this to be the development policies that we will use moving forward.
I have no question.
Well, so this is reformatted of what was on page six, is that what you're...
This is the lead, the lead paragraph that was missing.
Right, on eight, that was on page eight.
Yes, for the, for the settlement, for the settlement area, correct?
Yeah, okay.
In six, we had some questions about the requirement of trees, um, the open space park, uh, thing. We had some discussion on the internal connectivity. We decided to leave it, uh, alone, right?
The common area?
Yeah, I remember taking out the, uh, taking out the actual reference to a park and just leaving it as, as open space. Um, sidewalks, we, we talked about whether sidewalks are appropriate in, in low-density, large lot development. Um, if, if it would be easier at the next meeting if you would rather see kind of a red line, blue line version of this, so... We, we debated whether or not to do that, and now I wish we had...
I would not agree with staff's conclusion on not using the red, blue line. I'm just giving you a hard time. I was trying to remember all the changes also. So you're bringing that back then? Next one?
I am now.
And then the settlement area, the only change that I remember we're stuck about was the add edition of paragraph, power statement.
Yes.
Good.
And we borrowed liberally from some language that's already included in our village plan in order to create that policy statement. But so doing, we hope to be consistent with our village plan.
Guess not.
So, okay, they're leaving, so now we can talk about the important stuff. Um, if, if the Planning Commission does not see any need to change the description of those three single-family residential land use designations as they were written and adopted in 2011, and if we agree with staff's conclusions, at least for the moment, that the amount of property within each of those designations is appropriate, um, as currently adopted, then that's what I need to hear this evening. And yes, I will return at our December 4th meeting with a red line, blue, blue line version of the changes to the, the two development policies.
Well, I'm fine with what the conclusions were.
I'm okay with it, just be ready.
You've been warned, huh?
I'm a planner, I'm supposed to be ready for everything. Just write my title, just plan.
So is that it for that item, agenda item?
That's what I'm getting at, yes, sir.
All righty, good. 8.3, 2015-16 Heartland Township Strategic Plan Draft.
So this is the latest version of this draft. The Township Board saw this draft at their meeting on Tuesday.
Yep.
And we all agreed it was a good idea for the Planning Commission to see it this evening, particularly those items that have the word "planning" in them, and even more particularly those that are gonna require some effort from the Planning Commission. Um, this is a two-year strategic plan, so in the past, the township has done a one-year strategic plan, this is a two-year. At least for the planning department, those, uh, tasks that the planning department felt were more appropriate for 2016, we didn't commit ourselves to a date just 'cause it was determined, it was decided that it was a little too far off to try to peg a date on the 2016 projects. For the 2015 projects, uh, we have settled on a date, in the hope of the Township Board is that this strategic plan gets adopted at, uh, I believe their first meeting in December. So what I'm hoping for tonight is any feedback from the Planning Commission on any projects that you are going to be involved in, and make sure that we're comfortable with the dates that have been targeted for those. And I would suppose particularly, um...
Probably works, there's a lot of work to do.
Job security for, uh, Mr. West, hopefully job security for myself. Our names, our names show up here the most. Um, the, so yeah, I, I would ask the Planning Commission to look at any that have planning department as the champion, and then those that are targeted for 2015, and, uh, and see if you have any thoughts, concerns, suggestions on whether those months seem, seem reasonable.
I guess my only question would be based upon comprehensive plan work, possible some applicants in there, are these items that we've been assigned for July of 15, um, architectural standards, site plan reviewing process, I assume we have to at least review and be talking about those things? Are those types of things and the time needed to get those done along with the comprehensive plan, is that realistic to be done by July?
Well, in the opinion of myself and the Township Manager, they are, but I'm certainly open to being enlightened on something I didn't think of, we didn't think of. Keep in mind that at least with 3.1, numbers one, two, well, yeah, numbers one and two, the idea there is not necessarily that we're gonna have amendments to any of those ready to go by July, it's by July, we are going to know whether our current architectural standards for the Light Industrial District are the standards that we want to stay with, or if we want to change them. And then if we want to change them, then we start that process, but we need to know by July whether we're gonna do that. Uh, same for the site plan amendment process. Um, by July, we want to know whether we're gonna make changes, and if so, um, have an idea of what those changes are so that we can get going on those in the second half of the year. And I don't think that's unreasonable, that we could have some discussions. Hopefully, if the comprehensive plan is, is nearing the finish line in, in the spring, then in the late spring, early summer months, I think we can have some discussions about architectural standards in the Light Industrial District and the site plan amendment process. Um, I have my own thoughts on the site plan amendment process, in particular, I'm probably gonna be advocating for, uh, maybe getting some more administrative authority on some relatively simple changes, just in the interest of being, uh, business-friendly and expediting the process.
If it's discussion of it to decide if we want to move forward, I would agree. Which is the way you described it. And then we would have future date on completing it if we wanted to change it. It may be easy changes, and then it may not.
And we need to know that by July. Think we can figure that out by July?
Okay. An issue with it, I get when I reviewed it. You okay with it?
Yep.
You okay with it, Keith?
Yep.
Larry?
Yeah.
Okay. Looks like you got nodding heads of yes.
That's, I was looking for nodding heads.
Okay.
And those are the three items under Old and New Business this evening, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. No publics, so we'll move on to item 10, Planner's Report.
Hopefully in front of you, you found a draft of the 2015 Planning Commission meeting calendar, um, that is not set in stone, which is why it's still a draft, and I know, uh, Commissioner Hopkins has some, uh, suggestions on some things that he would possibly want to see moved, and I'll let him, uh, talk to that when we get to Committee Reports. You should have a copy of our latest and greatest Township Newsletter, which is the artwork of our Communications Director.
Right.
And that should be going out in, uh, the winter tax bills. Um, so you're probably gonna get it twice. Some new signs, I know, uh, the Planning Commission didn't give up, uh, Planning Commission signed approval, uh, easily, so just letting you know about the new signs that you're gonna see around town. Uh, the salon over at the Heartland Point Plaza, which is where Big B Coffee and Little Caesar's is, that got bought out, it's gonna have a new name, new wall sign. Uh, the perhaps more noticeable one is that the Shell Station is gonna go to a BP, and in so doing, they're gonna take down their 50-foot pole sign and put up a seven-foot monument sign, uh, the specs that we saw on that, it looks pretty attractive, so I think that's gonna be a big improvement in a pretty high-profile area. Uh, the Town and Country Professional Building, which is, uh, west of US 23, that's the office building that has the all-American dental and, uh, laser hair removal and some other medical-type uses in there. Their, uh, big, probably unattractive sign, uh, came down thanks to somebody backing up a little too far, and so that was a good opportunity for them to put a new sign that was brought into compliance, and I think it's a, if you look at the before and after, I'd like to think it's an improvement. Mr. West brought up Chestnut Development in discussing, uh, the water readiness to study, and they dropped off a revised concept plan this afternoon, uh, 10 sets of those. So this is a, a new concept plan per the plan development process, and, uh, that is a concept plan that the Planning Commission is going to see most likely in January, assuming it's a complete application, which I don't know yet, 'cause they just got dropped off late this afternoon. Um, it is for 26 units on that property. We've had meetings with the developer and with their engineer about whether that's a density that the township would be, um, uh, comfortable with, or a density that the township would be looking to approve, and we'll continue to have that, those discussions with both Planning Commission and the Township Board when that, if and when that can, concept plan gets to, uh, gets to this level. Um, for now, they, they've just been dropped off and logged in, and so we'll, we'll have more to come on that one. But that's where that one stands. The signed amendments that the Planning Commission held a public hearing on at the meeting on November 6th will hopefully be on the Livingston County Planning Commission's agenda for December 17th. Uh, the county planning staff is doing their review right now. And a quick reminder that our December meetings, just like in November, have been moved up a week from the typical second and fourth Thursday schedule. They're gonna be December 4th and December 18th. Obviously, nobody's gonna show up for a meeting on December 25th, which would be the fourth Thursday of December. So just make sure your calendars reflect that, meeting on the 4th and the 18th. And that is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Next up, item 10, Committee Reports, anything?
Well, as Dave just mentioned, I, I wanted to talk with the Planning Commission, uh, to see if they, uh, were willing to adjust, uh, some of the meeting schedule in 2015. Um, so, uh, it's, it's quite challenging when I end up having a meeting on, uh, the same week, a board meeting and a Planning Commission meeting in the same week. Uh, so that comes up about, um, five, six times next year. Um, and there's, uh, basically, I think, three of them that we could alter by sliding to the third and fifth Thursday. Um, it would still give us, in each instance, it would give us a week off in between meetings. It just would mean that instead of having two weeks off in between meetings at the, at the end of the month, we'd have it at the beginning of the month. And, uh, there's a few months that we can't do anything with, or I wouldn't propose doing anything with. Uh, November, of course, Thanksgiving holiday would keep us from doing that, Christmas, same thing. And then October, if we made that shift, we'd actually have PC meetings on back-to-back weeks, so I wouldn't recommend that we did do that. So, uh, and that's just my comment on, uh, the proposed, uh, draft, uh, meeting dates. And the three months that we'd be looking to go with the third and fifth, uh, would be January, April, and July. So...
That's fine with me. Anybody else? Anybody else have...
Yeah.
You good with that, Keith?
I'm good with it.
So, we would be then looking at January 15th and the 29th.
Yep.
We'd be looking at April 16th and the 30th.
Yep.
And July 16th and the 30th.
Yep.
Okay, everybody's agreeable to that. Anything else tonight, from anyone?
Just, I, I guess on this, so usually late December, we adopt our calendar for the coming year, so...
Probably the next meeting in case for some reason we didn't have the, the second meeting in December.
Yep.
Sooner or better. Anyone else? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Score? Follow the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Follows the name, motion carries, thank you.